I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone here. Good evening, council. And at this time, I'd like to give the opening to Councilor Jake Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like others on council, Audrey and myself spent, traded some white snow for the white sands of the Caribbean seas. This last vacation was no different than others. It took three days from the start of the vacation to begin to relax. And day three, I'm usually sick as, for whatever reason, and the stress starts to leave and then I can start to sleep longer and enjoy my time there. Only to start thinking about work as I'm sitting in a hammock or council or other stressors that make up our lives in the couple of days while we're, just before we leave. The one thing we enjoy on our vacation is the people around us because they come from all over the world, from many different countries and many different walks of life. Just comparing our day to day with what their day looks like makes for an interesting afternoon of discussion. We met a couple from Sweden who in the past, she had sat on their city council. And though a different community and different events, they faced many of the same issues we do. In their case, they could not grow as a community as a mountain stopped any growth, further growth in their community. And now they were dealing with an aging population that didn't want to move, causing a decline in the local economy. We spent the day with a couple out of Cleveland and he knew where we were. He was a fisherman. He drove, he claims to have driven through Steinbach to northern Manitoba to go fishing. Earlier that day, the governor of Ohio had declared a state of emergency due to cold and snow that was causing havoc in their area. It's an interesting discussion when you're sitting in 37 degrees of heat. While we kept away from the internet for the most part, Steinbach online and emails were still part of our nightly routines. But it is a coming home that I do enjoy. I look forward to leaving, but I certainly look forward to coming back home. I enjoy cold weather and even getting into a cold car is okay, knowing that Steinbach will still be Steinbach when we return. Now that we're at home, it took about 37 seconds for the stress to return as a pile of work on my desk indicated that I had been gone. Snow needed to be removed from our driveway and we did not, we did have to put on extra sweaters at home as we reintroduced ourselves to the weather. For the lack of humidity, the air cracked our lips each time we smiled that we were home. But in the end, this is still home. It's our place. This is our community and yes, we're looking forward to doing it all over again next year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Siemens, for that little look into holidays that we all go through that, but we all need to have those holidays too. Council, we've got the agenda in front of us. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Councilor Penner, second by Councilor Hebert. Any comments? Okay. Call for the question. All those in favor is carried. We have the minutes of February 4th, 2020, the regular council meeting. They start on page one. Council, we've all had a chance to review. Looking for a motion to approve. Councilor Hebert, second by Councilor Penner. Any comments?
No.
Anything further of council? Okay, we'll call for the question. All those in favor is carried. Number five, is there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none. We have no public hearing. We have a delegation, but you are waiting for a few more members of your party? Okay, well, we'll go down to, council will go down to number nine. A, accounts payable in the back of the book. We've all had a chance to review. We're just looking for a motion to approve. Councilor Hebert, second by Councilor Siemens. Anything, any comments?
No comments.
Any further? Call for the question. All those in favor is carried. We'll also go down to nine B. This is bylaw 2144, street renaming starts on page 35 of your package. Mr. Workantin, would you please introduce this file?
Yes, this is by law 2144. It has been introduced to council for the renaming of Cottonwood Drive to Cottonwood Bend. This file is quite old and the only reason why it was discovered is there was a proposed land use change on the street. At the time, it was discovered that the official road name that the city has been using for several decades was not formally registered at Winnipeg land titles. And that does require the bylaw to be completed over again. And recommendation is for council to give this bylaw a first and secondary.
Okay. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Penner?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second there? Councilor Siemens? Go ahead, councilor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure there was maybe a bit of some red cheeks or a bit of a red face when this came up, but this is very straightforward, just getting all of our ducks in a row and everything being proper, so.
Thank you. Councilor Siemens? Anything further of council? Anything in closing? Council, sometimes things get overlooked, so we'll call for the question. All those in favor of first reading is carried. So do you want us to go right into second reading?
Yes, please.
Okay. Looking for a motion for second reading. Councilor Hebert, second by Councilor Hebert.
No further comment.
No further comment.
And then we'll go right into the question. All those in favor, that is carried. Okay. Brenda, is your group ready?
We're ready.
Okay. Okay, council, we have a delegation today. This is Landmark Planning and Design and we will have them, they've got a PowerPoint and we'll be following along. Go ahead.
Great, thank you very much, council and your worship. My name's Donovan Taves. Our company's Landmark Planning is introduced. We also have Jeff Pratt and Brenda Tesarsky from Landmark Planning and Jeff Bell from Freezing Drillers, who's a hydrogeologist, who's done a lot of work in the areas, you can appreciate. We have a presentation. I know council's got a lot on its agenda, so I can tailor it to however much time you have, but about 15 minutes. And then if there are any questions, we could handle it after that, if that's okay.
I think that'll be fine. We're a little bit ahead of time, so.
Okay. And if I'm running late, you can give me the signal and I'll.
I'll just gavel.
Yeah. That's the point, we run out.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, well, appreciate, appreciate the audience. We were working on a project that has to do with water, as indicated, and there's a bit of a, we'd like to tell a little bit of a story as to how we got to this point, standing in front of you to tell this story. And then that's sort of the first half of the presentation. And then the last half is where we think this idea of a water supply could go. The spoiler alert is that the idea is about forming a water co-op. Call it, we've called it East Region Water Co-op, just to call it something and have something to talk about. But the idea is about a water co-op and our client is the Manitoba Water Services Board. But I'd like to get into how that all happened through the presentation. So again, why are we meeting? The Manitoba Water Services Board, or the MWSB retained us to explore the possibility of a water co-op. As I just mentioned, the province has been encouraging the establishment of regional water systems. There are several water co-ops that exist throughout Manitoba and I've got a map that will explain or demonstrate where those co-ops are. I think it's fair to say it's important for municipalities to plan for times of water shortage and to benefit from efficiencies. And again, I think it's fair to say throughout the province, there's different abilities to get water and there's fresh water here, but not there, for example. So in areas where there isn't, a water shortage isn't apparent, the idea of a water co-op may not be as obvious, but through this process, we'd like to see where it could go. Funding is available to encourage water projects. So I said I'd tell a little bit of a story. Back in 2005, the Pembina Valley Water Co-op, so for those who aren't, those of you who aren't familiar with that, that's the water co-op on the west side of the, of the Red River. It ties together Winkler and Carmen and Morton and a whole raft of actually 14 municipalities. They had an idea to drill a well in the Sandy Land. Some of you may remember it. It really was pretty prominent in the news and I guess, you know, the project was not well researched, in our estimation. And looking back, we read through all the history and there was a CEC hearing, a Clean Environment Commission hearing, and basically it really blew up. And like I say, it didn't seem like it was well researched. They just picked a spot and thought, this is a good place to put a well. And they had an idea that they would pipe it over to the west side and it didn't work out very well. And as a result, the project was, was not undertaken. And since that time, PVWC has explored other water source options. And I will tell a little bit more about PVWC because they were prominent. They are a client of ours. We've worked with them and we want to tell you that whole story of how, how we got to an idea like this. But this map shows a little bit of what was proposed, that red star, and I'm pointing over on this screen here. The red star was approximate location of that well. There is actually a well in the ground there. And they had thought they would pipe it towards Morris here. And they've got a treatment plant at Morris that, where they treat the water and then ship it throughout the west, western municipalities that I mentioned. This hatched area is the Sandy Land's Glacial Fluvial Mouthful Complex. And Jeff could explain this in great detail, but we won't be going into the detail tonight. But that's, that's essentially where the well was proposed, in that complex. And as I mentioned, it didn't, it didn't work out. Fast forward, that was 2005 and fast forward to maybe a couple of years ago, we were working with PVWC to help them try and figure out what their options were. They've got a good system that uses the Red River water and treats it and pipes it around. And this is a whiteboard picture in our office and they're facing an issue of possible drought, as are many municipalities on that side. The groundwater is all saline over there, apart from a few exceptions. And a little known fact is down at the border, I drew this little red line to symbolize that there is actually no agreement in place for the US to let the river flow to the north. So we learned from the experience of the Colorado River in the US, where the Colorado River approaches the Mexican border. And by that time, they've drawn so much out of it for irrigation and domestic use that it's very little, then they put a dam on that very little and it's made it very none. So no water flows into Mexico, generally speaking, from, from the US. And we have that same possibility here. Maybe never happens, but maybe it does. And we do know that there's drought times where the river has all but dried up. So that combined, this problem combined with the lack of groundwater here had them thinking of other ideas and hence that Sandy Lands project. We got to thinking, is there any reason why they shouldn't try again? And our idea was, let's just try the Sandy Lands idea again. And we had said, we don't think that's a good idea. We don't see why the same thing wouldn't happen again. And eventually this ended up that they would look elsewhere. And in the meantime, Manitoba Water Services Board got into the picture and said, that said, maybe there's a good reason to have a water co-op on the east side. Maybe there are communities that could use a redundant supply or even are having their own water troubles. And Jeff could certainly give a list of water challenges that have existed and had to go through processes for Niverville and other communities. If there are East Region Water Co-op, maybe that would be good for the east region and possibly, and at some point, if that were established, PVWC could become a customer of that water co-op. And that was just the seed of an idea and, and that's where we've ended up coming to this point. So numerous communities on the east side of the Red River, south of PTH1 might benefit from redundancy in supply. Future water supply planning for the southeast quadrant of the province is probably important. And servicing multiple municipalities from a single larger water treatment plant could provide sophisticated treatment technology. Establishing an East Region Water Co-op may be attractive to southeast Manitoba communities as many are experiencing water supply limitations, as I mentioned. And we could go into detail on some of those. And then I've, as I've said, if and only if supply were sufficient, then PVWC could become a Western customer of ERWC. Now, you might ask, how, how do we, how do we convince a client of ours to basically give up control and not be, be the entity that's pursuing water? And it's precisely because we convinced them that it was not feasible to try and do anything else. So that's why this proposal's come about. A little bit on Manitoba Water Services Board. They've assisted many municipalities to develop regional water systems throughout Manitoba. They currently assist six water co-ops, including Cartche and Yellowhead. Water co-ops are a legally registered corporation managed by a co-op board. I know you're familiar with co-ops. There's a board of directors comprised of representation from participating municipalities. So as I mentioned, PVWC is an example, has 14 member municipalities. They all share the costs and the benefits of the water. There is funding and regulatory assistance, so small public water utilities often have a difficult time meeting the considerable regulatory and reporting requirements. That's not Steinbach here, you've got a sophisticated system here. But we will be visiting many others who don't have that situation. Regional systems are attractive to municipalities and government funding agencies as being cost effective. And the Manitoba Water Services Board and federal provincial infrastructure funding programs consider regional systems as a high priority for funding, including the Canada Infrastructure Program. I promised a map, that's this one. And it's not precise, it's conceptual, but all of these blue circles represent existing water co-ops. The dashed one over here is not a co-op, but it's something that the MWSB is assisting that area and possibly establishing. But you can see them all throughout southern Manitoba. There's one up here near Dauphin. And I've drawn this as a dash because this is the idea that we're putting forward. In consideration of time, I won't get into the details on the next few slides. They're scientific in nature, but there is a bit of a lack of understanding in the general public. And for us ourselves, we're, we're planners and working with a hydrogeologist has taught us a lot about aquifers. Sometimes, you know, people have conceived of aquifer as just a ball of water under the ground and when you drain it, it's gone. And certainly it's not the case in every, every case. There are layers under the ground. And in this area, there's the, excuse me, limestone layer and the sandstone layer separated by a thin layer of shale. So most of the wells are shallower and they're in that limestone layer. So that's like a, basically a pile of blocks, if you can picture that, under the ground and all the water's in the fissures and the cracks and sometimes caverns in that layer. And the sandstone is more like sandstone, which is just a bunch of sand that's, you know, soft stone, if you will, and the water's throughout there. So it's a very reliable supply, but it's really deep, so it's more costly to go down and, and develop a well into the sandstone. Next slide. So I mentioned that the aquifers are in layers, but they're also very, very large, like the sandstone and the carbonate aquifer, which I just described, run in this blue area all the way from north of Lake Winnipeg down to the US border and past it. So those layers, when you're accessing one part of it, you're actually connecting to a much, much, much larger system of water. So the green circle represents approximate area that we've been talking about as the, as the east region. And it, and this could be one source for a water co-op system. One more sciency slide. Oh, go back to that one, thank you. There's the two layers, a little more precisely drawn, the carbonate aquifer and the sandstone aquifer separated by that shale layer that I talked about. I didn't mention there's till and clay on top. In this view, we're looking north, so west is here, east is here, Red River's here at the west. And when we talk about that Sandy Lands Glacial Fluvial Complex, it's all sand and gravel, so it's a, serves as a recharge and a source. So your rainwater gets in there, your snow melt gets in there and drains through and starts to feed through carbonate and sandstone aquifer. Now, it's not flowing like you might imagine a river flowing there. It's creeping at meters per year. So that's sort of the pace of recharge. But this is a very important area that, that receives water and recharges those two aquifers. There's some talk about the plentiful Manitoba water. I won't read through all these. Essentially what the slide says is that, yes, we are blessed with lots of water and in, as I've mentioned, in different degrees and different areas. But even east of the river here, there isn't limitless supply. There are areas, towns around Steinbach or perhaps even in your future planning. Can you be certain where you would get water, how that water would be shared if, you know, if there's a limited supply? So hence us thinking and putting this idea in front of council of a possible alternative supply or additional supply or future supply. And then we thought we'd put together as a starting point, just a bit of an outline. It always helps to have a picture. And so we drew this map of possible ERWC region, East Region Water Co-op, that stands for. And so you can, you're familiar with the map. I won't go through naming all the municipalities and towns, but this could be an area that might be serviced by a water co-op. So we've proposed to Manitoba Water Services Board a process. We do, we're land use planners. We get involved in lots of infrastructure projects, whether they're bridges or highways or sometimes hydro. Do work for municipalities and we lay out processes and we like to think we do a good job of it. Our main mantra is take your time. We're never rushing into anything. We like to be quite thorough and make sure that everybody is involved. And this is actually our very first meeting, our first stop. We thought it'd be nice to stop here first. But we envisioned a three round process and so this would be the kickoff, if you will, of round one. Each round might take, you know, up to half a year. When you, when you need to talk to a lot of people and you need to get a lot of people to consider an idea, it takes time and we have to hit regular council meetings, so there's scheduling and so on. So in round one, we imagined, envisioned doing what we're doing now as initiated dialogue as a starting point about any ERWC concept. If things go as planned and maybe they stop at some point and nobody wants to entertain this idea. But if they, if they do, then we would head into a round two where we would have follow-up discussions. We might talk about a co-op framework. We would definitely want to identify some supply options. That Sandy Lands was just one, one idea. Jeff's got a whole bunch of ideas and those ideas would involve field testing as well to see what the sources could provide. If all that comes together, and there's lots of ifs here, we would head, head into round three. We would talk about field test results. We would evaluate options. So another fundamental part of all of our process is a good evaluation of options and we do that transparently. We do it with folks. We might make sure that all the variables are in place and it can be easily and sensibly explained why you would choose option A over B, C, D, and E. So that's the roadmap that we've kind of laid out for this work, which is again in three rounds and maybe a couple of years. That is the end of the presentation and we're happy to take any questions. And if I can't answer them, anyone on our team could hopefully answer them.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions for the presenter? Go ahead, Councilor Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, that's an interesting presentation. You've gone over, you provided us with some good information. I guess the question I would have is that obviously when we look at our context here in Steinbach, we have abundant water supply. We have, we've just recently spent $12 billion to secondary water treatment plant, which is now successfully up and running. We have well qualified staff that, that run it and do so very well, so we know that the safety of our water is excellent. So when I look at all those things, the question I would like answered is, why would we consider doing this? What is the specific benefit to the city of Steinbach, given the situation that we're in here as far as the abundant water, the water treatment plant, the extra one we've just, the second one that we've just built, and the fact that we have full control with top quality staff running it? So why would we consider giving that up to do this?
Perfect question and it's the, I couldn't think of a better question to kick off a process with is that one, like why? Why would we even need to do this? And I'm going to ask Jeff to cover some, some reasons after I provide some, some response. But it may be that you never, you never do. You might never need this. Keeping in mind, as planners, we're thinking about, we should be thinking about 30, 40, 50, 80 years away and what, what happens then? So water supplies aren't guaranteed and certainly Steinbach is sophisticated enough to handle itself. You, there may become, come a point in time where you ask people like Jeff, hydrogeologists who manage to get licenses and work on your water supplies and make sure that you are well supplied to grow 10 times what you are right now. Most certainly, you would end up calling someone like Jeff and then he would tell you, well, here's how we can get you that water. And it could be raw water, keep in mind, just a way to get more water to your system. So A, you may not need it. B, you may, over, over a long, long period of time or a longer period of time. And also you may need it, given that there's essentially competition for a limited supply of water. You haven't hit it here yet. Where they have on the west, they, you know, as growth happened, it used to be fine, everyone would get their water supply and there was enough to grow around. And right now, there isn't on that side, all the way up to Brandon. They want to grow more potatoes and they can't. There's literally not an allocation of water. So it is a different situation on the side to the point where you'd say, I don't think we're going to need this. Thirdly, if a water co-op does get established, it may be that Steinbach wants to join later, at some point later. Or you might want to get in sort of on the ground floor and be a part of that planning. So I don't know. Is the shorter answer to the long one I just gave you? You might not need it. We do think it's worthy of discussion and worthy of contemplating for every municipality. And if, if at the end, you know, you participated in that discussion, you've asked your own experts, maybe you ask other experts, you conclude, we don't need it, it's no problem. It's, we're not selling anything and just, just an idea. Do you want to add to that? Probably good.
Yeah, so you're satisfied.
That answers my question, yeah.
Councilor Hebert, you have a question?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to ask you if you've been doing any work with the watersheds. And the reason I'm asking, I'm on the watershed here at Saint-Rat Rouge River now. And I know there's a lot of work going on in the Boine Rivers, in the Boine Dam, irrigation, water retention, drought preparedness, overland flooding. There's a lot of work going on, Red River Basin, the water basin there. Fargo-Moorhead is putting in a big diversion, coming this way as well and a bunch of stuff like that. And I've been just wondering if you've been doing any work. I realize you were saying that you're just at the early stages of.
Of this one.
Your preparation, but on one hand, you may say that the two don't overlap. I think they do and I would think that's very important for, you know, maybe just a suggestion that.
Absolutely.
Make some contact there.
Thank you very much. Could we get the map of the co-ops? Who's, who's operating the system? Ah, thanks. See it moving magically, so I wasn't sure. The answer to your question is we're doing, we're involved in a lot of water work. We're, we're not water experts. We're process experts and land use planners, so there's a nice fit. But all of this work is going on and layers, not shown, the work that you're working on in terms of watersheds, conservation districts, we're working on drought management plans. There's, there's a ton of activity around water, which to me, you know, south of the border and north of the border, it does underscore that the topic is relevant. And, you know, we would argue no better time to be planning for something when you, you know, as a time when you don't need it, to plan it in advance. But we'll definitely be, our objective is to reach out to everyone, which is a very large task. We want to start with municipalities. There's a number of large businesses that are water users that are also needing water and, and many others. So it's, it's an open, open dialogue.
Like I said, my, my thoughts are the, it's overlapping and there's a lot of work being done already.
Fair.
But, but you're suggesting here.
Thank you. Yeah, well, we will definitely want to take advantage of the work that's out there already.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Penner?
Through you. I'm just wondering, could you clarify, is this initiated by the Manitoba government?
The Manitoba Water Services Board is our client. They'll, they're actually going to pay the bills for, for this work. And the, the story that I was telling is how we got to that. And it did start with PVWC wanting to explore again, water options on this side. And we said, we don't think that, that that will work. And Manitoba Water Services Board was at the table for some of those discussions. And we said to them, well, it, probably a better idea to form a co-op if you can on this side. And then this side has control, also I mentioned control, I think you mentioned control of the system. And so it's, it would be more in the interests of the East Region Water Co-op entities to control that water.
Then the co-op, if established, determines, gets the water or.
Yeah, it's run as a co-op.
Where a well is established?
Yeah. So for example, you know, Pembina Valley Water Co-op's, co-op is 14 municipalities and they all have one seat and they all decide how that co-op is run. So I, I'm not saying that is the exact model that you could do here because you can set up, I'm not a co-op expert, but co-ops can be set up in different ways with different dynamics and different voting arrangements, but those would be for later discussions, how, how that, how that could be shaped up.
Okay, so then the co-op manages the water in your circle, as it were?
They, they would not, ultimately the responsibility to manage the water is, lies with the province. None of us have that authority. It lies with the province to, to manage the water supply. It belongs to everyone. It belongs to everyone in the province. So, a co-op wouldn't, wouldn't be responsible to manage the water, but they would be responsible to get a supply that's sustainable, that can be backed by science, that can be, an issue, a license could be granted by the province to the co-op.
And then, does the province pay for, for that? Or is now the idea that these municipalities now have to pay for it?
Well, they would be a business, municipalities would essentially be a business owner, right? Reaping the benefits of investing in, in a water supply. So, the, they need to be self-sustaining, so you're not at the whim of provincial funding, for example.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question for you two, clarification. So, if we would, if you would have a water co-op, now you'd have a centralized water treatment plant?
You could.
Pipe it out from there?
You could. You don't have to. It could be a raw water supply, for example. So, if you've, you've got your own treatment systems, you could purchase raw water from your own co-op, if you were a co-op member. Right?
Maybe it's worth adding too, and this kind of is a first question as well, that to be a member of the co-op, you wouldn't necessarily have to be doing all your water if you're a co-op. Like, when you're in Morden, for instance, in PVWC, they have their own supplies and they get a portion of their water from the co-op. Or you could use it as, you know, a backup source during drought times, for instance. So, it wouldn't necessarily have to be an all or nothing where, you know, all of your expertise and investments that you made aren't relevant anymore. It could be a supplementary source or a partial source of water as well.
Okay.
I just have one.
Go ahead, Counselor Swigstra.
Yeah, so just, I'm going to actually take that exact thing and just follow-up question then. So, then, is it, so it's possible then, if I'm understanding this right, that we could keep everything exactly as we are now and then potentially, there'd be discussion about another location within this area and there'd be seat at the table to discuss that while still making it very clear that what we're doing in Steinbeck is continuing? Am I understanding that correctly?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Penner?
Thank you. What would be some disadvantages? I mean, your experience with the other ones, what are some negatives? What are some potential cons to joining?
You want to help me with that? I, I'm not sure. Again, not a co-op expert and we didn't really get into their disadvantages. On that side, the, one disadvantage for sure, or maybe it's better said as a difficulty, is that you've, you're 14, you're 14 decision-makers in that PVWC context. So, you know, trying to agree on one thing among 14 can be challenging. So, process is challenging for sure. So, there, you would have to dedicate some measure of resource to the co-op. So, that, I can see that as a challenge and maybe not a disadvantage, but a, a cost, if you will, in order to have that relationship with the co-op. I'm sure there would be technical challenges in terms of obvious, you know, it's infrastructure engineering. Then again, you can engineer anything, it's just a matter of cost. So, whether the numbers work and if the numbers don't work, that makes it real easy to decide it, it doesn't work.
A system like this would effectively provide.
Can you come to the podium, please?
Yeah, they've got it working here. A system like this would effectively provide some redundancy. And I know Steinbeck is in a great position. I studied your system for 15 years, so I know it quite well. But you're still drawing from one aquifer. So, if you were to lose a well field, for example, you don't have redundancy. So, this system like this would provide some redundancy. So, if it was just a raw water line, for example, you could still keep your existing infrastructure for your treatment and you could just take some raw water in certain times of need. So, a lot of people are of the opinion too, that there's endless amounts of water in the southeast and nobody needs to be concerned about that. But there's a lot of competing use in this area. There's a lot of competing use within the Steinbeck Blumenard area. We call this the Steinbeck Blumenard drawdown cone because between you and Granny's poultry and the golf course, there's a lot of competing use here. So, this would provide you effectively some redundancy and that's security in the future for planning, so.
Thank you. Counselor Swigstra?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just, just to clarify then, so the area with the proposed, with the, the circle, would the co-op have authority or just, would, would the co-op have authority over water within that circle? Or would the co-op have authority over whatever sources identified that all have agreed that that's going to be that source? But the water we have here wouldn't, wouldn't be under that control. I just want clarification on that. Like if, if there was a co-op and it's that circle, does that basically mean that the co-op decides on what happens with the water within that circle or not?
I can all reiterate and then if you don't think I got it. But the authority, you've used the word authority. So, in terms of authority, you don't have it now, nobody has it now. It rests with the province. So, this entity, if it's a, a co-op is established, would still need to ask for permission to access water. Everybody has to do that. You have to apply for a license and then you may be granted that by the authority, which is the province. So, the, the group would cooperate to make decisions about where the water supply would come from, but would still ultimately need to ask the province, just as you do now. You, you have to continue to operate your system and it's regulated by the province. There's no, no difference in that respect. Okay. We have overlapping information, so.
Yes, Counselor Hebert.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The aquifer that we're in, is that part of the sandy lands aquifer?
No, the, the sandy lands is feeding all those bedrock aquifers. The sandy lands is a huge complex that extends all the way basically from the Winnipeg River down to the US border. It's a massive sort of wedge of sediments that sort of feed all of our bedrock aquifers. So, it's a pretty big resource and it's really what's driving everything in the southeast. Jeff, Steinbeck would be in cross-section. Right about there, yeah.
So, in other words, the, if you had extra wells built in the sandy lands reserve, the aquifer, could that affect Steinbeck in the long run?
No, I don't think so. I think it would be too far away for something like that. And remember, this complex is huge and it's driving a fairly big system here. So, you're not the first people or we're not the first people, even the PVWC wasn't the first people to look at that. The city of Winnipeg looks at that as a potential backup water supply 20, 30 years ago. So, it's a fairly large system, somewhat untapped, really. If I could add to that answer, just one more is, is that the proposal isn't to go build a well in the sandy lands. There's no, there is no proposal. That the process should result in a series of possible options for how to access an additional source.
Thank you. Anything further of counsel? Okay. I, I guess that's all the questions. If you have nothing further, then.
Very good, yeah. Thank you, appreciate the time, appreciate open minds. And if, if you do end up in talking about it and you have more questions, please contact us. We'll leave our contact information. And like I say, we'll be on the road for the next five or six weeks, just visiting other municipalities, sharing this exact same presentation, answering probably a lot of similar questions. And we'll, we'll stay in touch. If we don't hear from you, then you'll hear from us again if you'll have us back.
Hey, thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation, for coming out tonight. And, you know, it was very thought-provoking and, and I think informative. I think we learned something today about our aquifers.
Great.
So, thank you very much.
And thank you.
Okay, counsel, we'll go to number eight, A. Reports and recommendations from city manager. 2019 traffic study starts on page three of your package. Mr. Workantin, would you like to introduce or possibly show some highlights?
Sure, I can do that. The traffic study that does counts of all the significant traffic flows and intersections on PTH 12 and 52 through Steinbeck is done annually. A supplementary report was also prepared for the Old Tom Road area of Steinbeck. It does not include any provincial trunk highways or provincial highways. However, that traffic count program was started in 2016, a year prior to the asphalting project for Old Tom Road, just to try and get a better sense of what kind of traffic flows were happening in that area of Steinbeck. By and large, there have been no surprises from 2018 when compared to the 2019 report. Many of the trends that have been identified in past reports by WSP are again repeated. Overall, it was observed again that the traffic counts in Steinbeck are increasing at a rate of anywhere from 1.2 to 3.6% annually. It does depend on which intersections that are being counted. And sometimes there are some fluctuations, whether there's particular development or construction or other factors that maybe are a one-year blip, but for the, for the most part, the average is pretty consistent. It certainly was the case where traffic volumes along the eastbound and westbound directions along 52 Highway increased in some cases significantly from 2018. Generally, the most challenging intersection in Steinbeck was again identified as PTH 12 and Lowen Boulevard. That again is not a surprise. The city spent some considerable funds along with the province on improving number of intersections along PTH 12 over the past five years. So, what were previously our most congested and most poorly performing intersections were improved and by knocking off the worst ones, we now have a new worst one. I hate to say it that way, but it's pretty much exactly that. But overall, the Lowen Boulevard location is common knowledge. We have been working with Manitoba Infrastructure on some plans and some options to look at what's the best way to improve that intersection so that when perhaps some city and provincial funding is approved for that project, then the improvements can proceed. But overall, the summary that was provided on page 34 is a good snapshot of what's provided. But if there are any other questions of counsel, be happy to try and answer those.
Counselor, are there any, any questions for administration at this time? Okay, counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Swigstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will make the motion that we, that we accept the record, the report, forward it to the province with a particular request for the province to look at improving Lowen Boulevard as we requested in previous years.
Okay, do we have a second for that? Counselor Siemens? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Swigstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This traffic study is something that the city has done for many years now and this is a city initiative. And we do this because we know the traffic numbers continue to increase within the city and we want to make sure that we have evidence behind the request that we make to the province in regards to, in regards to possible upgrades. And I think that these traffic studies that we have consistently done and forwarded to the province have been very helpful in regards to helping us make our case to the province for, for the upgrades that need to happen. As the city manager highlighted, there, together with the province, we've seen, we've upgraded, for example, the Park Road and PTH, that intersection is one of the most important ones that we've upgraded. But we've had other upgrades as well. We've also, some intersections in the past didn't have signal lights, now they do. But Lowen Boulevard stands out. If you look at the, if you look at the chart here on page 24 and then the supplementary information on page 25, we see quite clearly that Lowen Boulevard continues to have an unacceptable level of service. And that's because it does not have the dedicated turning lanes that it needs to have. And so, if you look at the numbers in terms of the average wait time during the PM peak hour, you can see that it was even back in 2016, it was a low, the, the service level wasn't acceptable. But we've seen a steady increase in terms of the length of time the traffic has, has to wait. It's particularly noticeable when you're, the eastbound traffic, as we can see in terms of the turning and cross streets, 559-second wait, that is a long time to wait. And I think we've all done it too. I think we've all made the mistake of going on Lowen Boulevard and trying to turn there and waiting 559 seconds or more. That is a, that is a very long time to, to have to wait. And so, we need to see, we need to see the province make some improvements. I just calculated the minutes here, about, it's about nine and a half minutes of waiting. It's a long time to be waiting to turn left. The information in the report also does contain some different options here and that estimate the likely improvements that we would see. And these include obviously the most basic level, having eastbound and westbound left-turn lanes. But then at the other levels, also having those turn lanes with the, what are called the permissive and protected phases. So, you have, you know, the traffic light specifically, you have the dedicated time where you can actually turn. We're talking about basic traffic control, essentially bringing up to a similar standard that we see in Park Road now. And Park Road used to have these, these types of numbers. And now with the improvements, it is, it's now at an acceptable level of service. And so, I think it's, we need to continue to be clear about this. We appreciate the fact that we've had previous improvements to other intersections. But Lowen Boulevard is, along Highway 12, it's the weak link right now. It is the intersection that we are having, that we're having the problems with as far as the delays. If we could, if the province could move ahead with making upgrades there as far as the turning lanes, that provincial highway going through would just be, would be that much better. So, I think it's important that we, that we pass this motion and make sure we forward this report to the province.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Siemens?
Yes, I agree with the comments made at this point. I think every time that I review this report, other things stood out to me. Just a few things that I noticed is that with the lights now at Industrial Road and 52, we've got more traffic movement, turning movements. So, the way I would read that is that there's more people using that and down a park road as a sort of bypass, so they don't go through the Lowen Boulevard and 12 intersection. But it also, there's, there's a lot more, our traffic counts are up. And it says in our, in our summary report as well, that overall, our traffic is up around 2.1% to, or over the last, it's 1.2 to 3.6% over the, over the past 10 years. So, I think that all these numbers indicate that. And with the different traffic flows, so it is interesting to see. One thing that I found interesting is after we asked for the report on Lowen Boulevard and Hespler and Old Tom and Lowen Boulevard, that, those numbers actually dropped this year. And they said in here, that is because the year prior, there had been some traffic flows diverted to that area during counting days, so that makes sense. It'll be interesting to see what our next year's numbers look like on, in that regard because that is still a corner that does back up traffic to quite an extent during peak times as well. But overall, I agree, we'll, let's continue to do this year over year, do the traffic count. Let's send it to the province for a response. And this does indicate that Steinbeck is in the with moment.
Thank you. Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing? Well, counsel, the, I, I agree with this motion too. I, I was just looking at the numbers. If you, if you just take the vehicle traffic that goes through the Lowen Boulevard intersection and that's all traffic, north, south, east, west, you're getting very close to 3,000 vehicles per hour during peak usage times. Well, and that, that intersection just cannot handle that kind of volume effectively and, and, well, it's handling it fairly safely, but it just can't. It cannot handle it effectively. So, I, I'm going to totally, I'm going to support this motion. I think this is something we need to keep working on with the province and seeing where we can do, get, get done here because we do need to improve this intersection. Counsel, call for the question, all's in favor. That is Carrie. Thank you. Now, counsel will move to nine C, bylaw 2141, Lexington RLD-RSF, first reading. As found on page 38 of your package. Mr. Workantin, would you please introduce this file?
This is an application to rezone several properties within the Lexington Village Phase Five development from RLD to RSF. RLD being residential low density to RSF, which is residential single-family. Again, it is just to facilitate planned development. It is recommended for counsel to give this bylaw first reading and then a public hearing may be scheduled for later on in March.
Thank you. Counselor, would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Counselor Hebert? Go ahead, Counselor Penner.
Yes, in a situation like the Lexington Village, there is, it's a big area that's being developed and when they do the concept plans, they're not always sure what supply and demand is going to be for the types of homes people want to buy. So, that's why we see so much from Lexington Village because when it's zoned initially, it, you know, they're taking a best guess maybe. But things, as time goes on, things change. So, that is why I will support the motion for first reading.
Nothing further. Anything further of counsel?
Yes, counsel, I agree with.
Yes, counsel, I agree with Counsel Penner. I think these, these large projects like this, they're somewhat fluid and they need to remain fluid because you see, as you start developing, you see the needs that are coming up. And so that's why we need to be a little bit flexible and make this happen. So I'll just call for the question for first reading, all those in favor. And that is carried. We go nine, D. Bylaw 2145, Harmony Lane, first reading. That is on page 48 of your package. Mr. Workantene, could you please introduce this file?
Bylaw 2145 is also an application for rezoning for a proposed residential development that is located south of Mackenzie Avenue. It is to rezone from DR1, which is Development Reserve 1, to RSF, residential single family, and RLD, residential low density. And this is part of a multi-phase development. Again, recommendation is for counsel to give this bylaw first reading and a public hearing could then be scheduled later in March.
Thank you, Mr. Workantene. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Swexler?
Sure, I'll make the motion we approve.
And Counsel Penner, second? Go ahead, Counsel Swexler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I think it's a straightforward application here. This is for the expansion or extension of this neighborhood going west of Harmony Lane and it being rezoned from, potentially from Development Reserve to RSF and RLD. It makes sense. This area is currently designated residential policy area in the official community plan. This is first reading and if passed, then it'll allow a public hearing to be scheduled and then we can hear from the applicant and from the public.
Okay, thank you. Anything further, Counsel Penner? Counsel Penner, anything further? No? Okay. Anything further, counsel?
Just one comment, Mr. Mayor.
I talked to the other Counsel Penner.
Just one comment on page 54. That's one of the first times that I've seen a whole conceptual plan of that whole area. And that's good to see that there has been that type of planning gone into it.
Anything further? Anything in closing? I would, I would agree with you, Counsel Siemens, that conceptual plan looks pretty good.
It's in color, too.
I know. And it shows...
Very nice.
Colors are good. Call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. Counsel, nine, E. We've got building permits for January 2020. It's on page 56. Been a bit of a slow start this year, but we're looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Siemens. Any comments?
Like you say, it's a slow start, but we're looking forward to more.
Yeah. Anything further? Any further of counsel? Anything in closing?
No.
Okay, call for the question, all those in favor. That's carried. Nine, F. We have appoint the weed inspector, page 57. There is a motion to be resolved that Trevor Schellenberg, the community service officer, be appointed as city Steinbach weed inspector. Looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Penner. Any comments?
It's my understanding that Mr. Schellenberg has been doing some of this work in the past years in auction suites and stuff and he's well versed on that and I think he's a good choice for the city to do that.
Anything further? Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing? We'll call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. Nine, G. 2019 lottery licenses, counsel, there's a long list on page 58 of all the lights to approve. We're just looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Penner, second by Counsel Siemens. Any comments?
No comments.
Anything further? Nothing of counsel? Anything in closing? Call for the question, all those in favor.
Take a chance.
Number 10, counsel question period. Any questions of counsel? Number 11, we've got correspondence and petitions. Number, letter A, municipality of Lackey-Bunny, the 2020 Eastern District Municipal Golf Tournament on page 59. The entry deadline is June 25th, so counsel, if you, you need, want to go, then let someone know.
You don't want me representing the city golf.
Out of the way, I golf, you don't want me there. 11, B. Seine Rat River Conservation District, the minutes of November 19th, 2019, December 9th, December 17th, and January 21st. We're all together, looking for a motion to approve. Counsel, oh, Counsel Hebert? Oh, right, sorry, sorry. Disinformation, we'll take it as information. Thank you. Unless there's anything further.
I could just make one comment on that. A little disappointed that these reports are coming this, this late, like this in November and December, this, in January. So I'll bring it up with our watershed that they're, come here in a more timely manner.
And that's, then we got 11, C. Junior Achievement Manitoba Program, request for funding. Counsel, would you like to proceed? Accept this information. Number 12, other business, seeing none. Adjournment, motion for adjournment. Counsel Penner, second by Counsel Hebert. Call for the question, all those in favor. That's carried. Next regular council meeting is Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, at 7:30. Thank you.